Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. If y'all would please stand and...
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. We ask that you would be with us during our deliberations and make the results of those deliberations, Lord, to the benefit of those that we serve. Lord, we're experiencing some dry spells here. Lord, we pray that you would send us rain. And we know that you will in due time. We ask again, Lord, that you would watch over those who have dedicated their lives to service, to the community, though they be first responders or military. God, we pray that you would watch over them. These things we ask Heavenly Father in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Have a seat and welcome to the regular Commissioners' Court meeting for Thursday, May the 19th. Let the record reflect that we still have a forum, although Commissioner Sider is out recovering from COVID and Commissioner Lynch is moving his daughter, who got into medical school in Memphis. So he is moving her into a new house. But I'm sure that we can handle it without my help. So anyway, first we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Payroll Number 10 for the period ending May 11.
I'll make the motion to be approved.
All right. Do I... I was gonna say, do I have a second? Motion in a second and we have a discussion. All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Personal Action Forms.
The first one is with Dr. Vines. She's by increase in slot. Excellent vocal review is increase in slot. Andrew Ramada, increase in slot. Is that it?
That's it. I'll make the motion to be approved. Action, personal forms.
I second.
Motion in a second and we have a discussion. All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Financial Renewal and Terms Amendment to the Contract with United Healthcare Service LLC.
Yes, this is just a yearly annual agreement for the dental and the treasury for the dental. By then, we'll let the court know that United Healthcare has made good and worked through that all supplemental line claims.
So the meeting we had with when they weren't paying the increased lifelinks, United Healthcare is gonna cover it all. It's covered, good. So that's good news. That was gonna be our executive session items. So we're not gonna have an executive session today because United Healthcare has come through and said they'll pay everything. So we don't need executive session.
Great. Well, I'll make the motion to be approved. Just an action, renewal, and terms amendment. The contract number seven oh eight oh three with United Healthcare.
Second. Motion in a second and we have a discussion. All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Update of the Personal Policy to Include Definition for Emergency Lead.
Okay, I think you kind of copied the policy in your package.
We do.
To be highlighted. We just go crossface on the term of course emergency because I interpreted one way, the guys interpret another, Mr. McManus interpret another. What exactly are we willing to find an emergency as? So I thought it would be like tornado, hurricane, cloudy.
Snowmageddon.
Snowmageddon. But some of the guys think it is any kind of work outside of their normal schedule.
Well, we wouldn't if you called them back in just to pick up a tire. I mean, if you have a train fall over at the middle of the road, that's kind of considered emergency because you gotta get it off the road. You know, whether it's due to drought recently fall over or, you know...
I think that's the thing we wanted to know, just what do you make of consider it emergency? Because I was in the impression that it would be the Commissioners' Court who would decide whether it was an emergency or not. But ultimately, it's coming out of your budget. So I mean, I think y'all, if we want to wait until the other commissioners get back or y'all wanna just make it so that each commissioner designates what if an emergency is?
Well, we have phone call personnel to ensure you can hear their side. And if the trees down on the road, that's not an emergency, we give them, you know, give a dress and they go out. Usually, it's something that the reporting agency, I want to say Sheriff's Office, could handle. And when we get out there, they're not there, so... But they do get called out and they, from the time that they hit the phone call till the time they get back to the yard, that's what we consider their oversight. Is it an emergency? Yeah, not really. But like a fire situation and the snow and the fires and stuff, that would be an emergency.
But it is kind of emergency, the fact that they got to get up in the middle of the night and be called out. Otherwise, they wait till the next day, right?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, you're right.
So I guess I'm just saying, trying to make it something, if they get called out because they have to go do something, then this would apply. Does that sound fair to y'all? Because that way, there's not a lot of questions. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
So if it's 10:00 at night and they gotta go out and do whatever, that just makes this apply so then they have the choice of collecting time and a half or they have the choice of putting it in as comp time. Right?
Yeah, you're right.
Is that good, y'all? So as it's written, is that good?
Yes.
All right. Now you have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Philadelphie Constable Position in Precinct Two. Constable Shabelski, you have two that have opened and you want to fill one of them with Mike Graham.
That is correct, sir. One of my deputy constables became elected as a constable in Bear County, Manberry County. His position has kind of been off and on. Now he just doesn't have the time to work with me anymore. So I've gotta F5 him with the state. I'd like to replace him with Mike Graham.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to be executed.
Second.
Motion in a second and we have a discussion. All those favor say aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It was simple enough, right? All right, next we have Discuss Take Possible Action. Do we have any minutes? We have minutes.
Three seconds.
All right, we're gonna take Possible Action Approval of Minutes for the 7th, the 21st, and the 5th.
I will be except that's written.
Motion in a second and we have a discussion. All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have the County Auditor's Monthly Report.
Yes, we have cash report and then we have warrant schedule. And this is for months of January, February, March, April. The numbers, the balances there on April are at the end of April.
So we have $21 million in the general fund?
Beginning of April. I mean, end of April.
At the end of April.
We're still pending a couple of reports from county clerk, district clerk, a couple of the JP's are a couple of months behind, which also affects y'all's precincts.
Okay. Good.
And then the time, the warrant sheet is what we have on two time warrant, three time warrants, the debt service, and then the bottom section is what the precincts have borrowed from the TAM 2020.
The American Rescue Plan money, do you know when that's coming in? The second round?
Don't, I don't.
Do you know any idea?
We submitted everything and they've told us that it's on the way. We just don't have a scheduled date, ten...
Okay.
They said sometime in May, so we're getting close to the end.
There we are. All right. Anybody have any questions? So the county attorney special firm, where is that? 57.
That's, they used to collect money from hot checks. DA has taken over that.
What do they do with those funds?
They have special, I can't tell you exactly what they can or can't do with it, but they can only spend on certain things.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then let's move on to the next one. Stay there. Discuss Take Possible Action Approval of Lineout and Transfers.
We have one from the DA moving 8,000 out of training, continued education, and put it into equipment out of their current budget.
Okay. I will approve the lineout transfer of the DA.
You got one on the backside.
We have two lineout transfers.
Hold on, I'll put that motion, hold that motion.
Thanks, sir. We have, I won't go through each line. Moving 55,465 out of several accounts and shifting them over the same amount, 55, 465 into different accounts. And this is, the biggest one was they redid and painted the dock handles. They had gotten a nice warning on that. And then just correct a couple of repairment maintenance items.
He's not gonna be short of tire tubes and batteries, is he?
He shouldn't be. No, he's not. I looked at that one. He's still good.
I'll have the sheriff kind of share about with the control group.
Did you want to add that?
No, that's for the animal control truck.
That 41,000?
The 41, yes. The 41, yes.
And the equipment, some of the equipment also.
Yeah.
For the animal control truck.
The new one we just...
Yeah, it's just, Jennifer, we did budget and all got left to the sheriffs.
Right.
And it's just getting it over to the right place.
So we took 41,965 out of the sheriff's capital outlay.
Yes.
Because he bought a truck for animal control.
Right.
Okay. Is it in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All of them are in, right?
No, the Tahos are being equipped right now.
Okay, but we've got...
In 30 days, for sure.
Tahos will be in in 30 days?
All of them, one's own back order.
Nine of them?
Apparently, they don't have a chip.
We have nine, nine Tahos?
Yes, sir. Eight of them are there being updated right now.
Does that include the black one that I heard?
I think we gotta figure out.
We got it.
Just get it correct. That's what we're waiting on.
Oh, okay.
It's the one up in the air.
I have a motion.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of the Second Installation Payment to Yancey Water Supply using the ARCA funds. So they have a $224,000 request, is that correct?
No, that's how much they spent.
Oh. Oh, they're requesting 200,000.
The second one is gonna be 200,000.
And you guys have, these, they're...
I just talked to Debbie this one and the only thing, we're gonna hold this check until they send me a picture, screenshot of a voided check that they state that they voided. I mean, reissued it. It's for 126,000 or 136,000. And I would just like to see that voided check so that we don't run into any issues.
But you're satisfied with...
Everything else is, I would like to approve it. Just hold the check until we get that.
I'll make that motion. Hold the check until we get through this.
Approve it and then hold the check.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action Approval of Partial Envoys from Teal Construction Company for the jail kitchen drain. So you're looking at $59,000. And here's what it is. This, the drain in the kitchen is bad. They have to redo the whole drain. We are not taking this money out of the note, I'm sorry, the money that's paying the jail with. This is gonna come out of the sheriff's budget. We're gonna have to transfer some money around, but this is actually a repair that was gonna have to happen regardless because they had it going. I think, well, they had the jackhammer key. Tell us, they jackhammered into the concrete or something?
Yes, sir. There's four folder drains spread out in the kitchen and the scullery area of the kitchen of the jail. And Mr. Racine is having problems for a few years, actually. We did that going into construction and they were clogged when he tried to get out there and he could never get through the drain properly. Well, once we got in there and found out that all the cast iron literally throughout that, under the floors, rotted out. So they had to tunnel underneath the floors and replace all that stuff. Rather than cut all the floors out, they tunneled under it.
So that's, and then Bicecar came in. Anyway, so we had to redo it because they're adding more to that drain now with the kitchen installation. So we're going to, and Edward will probably have to do some money moving around out of sheriff's budget or jail budget for this to do some lineout transfers. But it's coming out of his budget because it's not necessarily a construction value.
So the 59,000, that's going to be out of jail.
Out of sheriff, yes. And if we need to figure out how to move some money from other places to get it done, another sheriff is not budgeted for that. Okay, we'll just get together and figure it out. So...
Does that include the front part of this?
The 8,000?
Yeah.
I think those are both separate invoices, aren't they, Keith?
Yes, sir. The 8,000, I believe, was the initial when they came out and cut all the floor open and found what the issues were.
Yeah.
And then the rest was after they, the animal tunneling and repair.
Put in everything new. So it's total 67.
Both of these are expressed on...
We need, and I want y'all to be aware of it because it is a significant amount of money. Will we approve the invoice? Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those favor say aye. Any opposed? Keith, they're doing this work already, right?
Yes.
They're, because they have to do it to get caught out, to stay caught out. Okay. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Accounts Payable.
The total is 986,000, $179.97. We also have an add-on for the Yancey, Yancey Water for 200,000. Also, Edward brought to my attention this morning that Quattro T has started adding a fuel surcharge that we are not going to pay because it's not in the contract. One of the fuel surcharges was $4,100. That was for you. Actually, they're all for you. Anyway, Edward did talk to Mark Havy and he said that it's not in the contract. We don't have to pay it. And he's starting to get notice from the other fuel companies that they'll be increasing rates. He also suggested we put it on the agenda for the next quarter to figure out what we're gonna do.
We probably do need to have a discussion with that because I, it's not fair to them that they're stuck with this and we need to figure out how to make it right because...
Had they had an amendment in the contract that covered fuel charges...
I think we should, Jennifer, have that on the next agenda to talk about. I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think we just need to discuss all of it. We've got a notice from Martin area out of Vulcan. Quattro T didn't notify us. They just added that surcharge, that fuel surcharge. And I'm not saying we're not gonna pay it, I just...
Just tell them that we're gonna talk about it next.
We've communicated with them.
Next meeting.
They know this one.
Okay. We do need to make that right for them.
Well, that's the problem with Vulcan right now. Their drivers aren't, are refusing votes as it's not paying them. Sometimes we'll go another down there, cash materials. They don't want to bring to us for the little amount that they pay. So if we have trouble available, then we can send them up there.
How are we looking over there?
All right.
Hey, Edward, on this, you got me reimbursed for a serpentine belt.
You didn't send me a check, did you?
What is that for?
The last item under precinct four, you got me being reimbursed for a serpentine belt. It was one of the deals. We had to have it now, so I gave them a credit card. And we found the belt and we took it back and they took it off my credit card. So I need to be reimbursed.
I have to look at that, but I don't think we're getting a check back. I think we have coded it to your account. And now we're, if there was return, then we need to record it as a credit to that expense account.
Okay.
Did you get a receipt for the return and send it to our office?
I don't know. It was one of the days.
Oh, yeah, I might need to talk to Jennifer.
One of what days?
One of those days.
It was a typical Monday.
Yeah.
You guys, can I leave?
What?
Can I leave?
You still got a lot of work to do here.
I ain't heard you vote yet.
I never do. As long as it's not a tie, I don't.
That's a force to it.
When you guys just... What do you think? No. Okay.
Say we do it that way, it'd be the first time in three, or two, it's been a break time.
Why don't you want to do that? Go away, Chris.
Just because.
Just because. So far in seven years, I've under...
You start talking about the charge right there, isn't it?
I can count the number of times I've voted on two hands, so...
You gonna make him start using his feet?
No. And I can almost tell you every instance where I acted, so...
It's in the paper.
It is.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payment.
Second. Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
All those... I was really finding restitution accounts that David is, I didn't see any. I forgot my bag in the office, I'm sorry. I want to be fine.
You didn't see any? Okay. If there is any restitution, we won't include it, all right? All those favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Discuss Take Possible Action on Approval of Dispersion of Funds Since the Last Commissioners' Court Meeting.
Yes, utilities in the amount of $32,417.36.
And will we approve the Dispersion of Funds Since Last Commissioners' Court?
Second.
So Debbie?
Yes.
How hard would it be for you to just give us kind of a last six months of how much our utilities have gone up? Because I know that they're charging us more, right? Just the basic cost of utilities.
I think we have a spreadsheet that shows it.
I'm just curious, how much more we're spending on utilities, just like diesel and everything else we're trying to make it through. Whenever you have time. No rush. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
I'm going to that page.
No, you're not. No, you're not. You gotta hang around. Next, we have Visitors' Public Conference. Mr. Persine, come on up. You're up. If you've never been here before on Visitors...
I've never been here.
We do Visitors' Public Conference. It's three minutes to tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Oh, it won't take me three minutes.
Okay, then you're up.
I want to start by congratulating on this facility. I haven't been here before.
Oh, thank you.
You guys, what magnificent, what an improvement.
Thank you. It is, well, it's something we will be proud of for years to come.
Yeah, great job.
Thanks.
I'm here to talk about County Road 4643, the road I live on. There's a couple of things going on there. Let's start with the road. The road, I understood was gonna be improved and be helped by Vulcan, who was pretty much just the one that damaged it primarily. We have trucks coming through there. It's not very many people live on that road now, but we have trucks going there anywhere from 25 to 50 a day. Now, they use it to cut across to go to Queehe, to go to the quarries. I don't know why they're there, but there's lots of them coming, especially when Vulcan is working. They improved and upgraded the track. They put a new track in. And anyway, they've done a lot of, those trucks, the roads not built for the big trucks, 18-wheeler, we all know that, the roads of Manida County. So I'd like to see that road upgraded some kind of way by somebody. And I think it needs to be. And I also think we need to sign on there that says, no trucks. You know, let them go on the foreign market road or rerouting. I don't know why we're allowing those trucks to come down Queehe Road and then cut across to 90 on a road that's not built to handle those kinds of trucks. Anyway, it's costing you money. I know it's costing Tim. He's got repairmen out there all the time trying to patch the holes. Anyway, that's number one. Number two, the subdivision. There's subdivision going in at the end of the road. Tim says it hadn't been applied or approved or preliminary approved or anything. It's supposed to be 95 manufactured homes at the end of the road. Those manufactured homes are gonna devalue all the property up and down that road. And we all know that, we just, you go just south of Dunley and see what's going on. They're selling one acre tracks with a cheap, very cheap double wide home, 250,000. These people are paying, you know, zero down. Here we go, get them in. And, you know, within four, five, six, eight years, you know what it looks like. The value, you know, those people are not getting help. I mean, it's a scam. They move in and within less than 10 years, the thing's worth, the home's worth nothing. So y'all all know. And why our area has to be the dumping ground for these double wides, I don't know. But one of the things I think brought it on is that y'all changed the regulations as far as the approving the size of the tracks that we allow to build a subdivision. It went from, I think, 1.5 acres to one acre. I can appreciate that on a conventional built home, but on a manufactured home, they're losing their value and the home is going down the drain. And allowing them to put it on a one acre track is doing that customer and our citizen and our taxpayer who's invested in those, he's not doing, you're not doing them any favor. You know, because all they're gonna have left is gonna be the value of the property. So I don't, I'd like y'all to reconsider that when it comes to manufactured homes in which this is. And in addition to that, they're gonna dump, they're gonna have 95 lots, multiply that by three, and you can see the additional traffic that's gonna be put on this road that's already in very ill repair. I understood originally that Vulcan was gonna help pay for the improvement of that road. There was supposed to be some kind of agreement or something, but we've never seen any improvement. We've only seen deterioration since Vulcan moved in. So basically, that's what I have today. So I hope that didn't go over three minutes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anybody grab a book. But if you hang around, we're gonna go into a break right now and I'll talk to you about the second part of it, okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Persine. Anybody else? Is that gentleman getting up to talk or is he just coming in to...
Moral support.
Moral support? Okay, are you covering for Commissioner Lynch then?
No.
We do need, we do need some moral support.
We do need moral support?
Yeah, it's a conversation that's taking place with Tim, Ember, myself, and even Jerry's much, I talked to one of them this morning out there. The best is material way.
Okay. We got it on the agenda.
It's an item.
It's an item on the agenda, so hang around. Judge Klaus, did you have anything you want to tell us?
No, sir, not this morning.
Well, welcome here.
Well, thank you. I actually came a little bit early. I was gonna, kind of represent the Community Action people.
Yeah.
And I didn't want to share what time it was on the day to do it this morning. It was 10:00, so I came.
Is it on? Community Action?
16.
Yes, it's like 16.
You're on next. How many days till retirement?
How many, Gary?[1787.21] Two hundred and twenty-one.
I feel bad. The other day, I, I should have. Judge Klaus is retiring too, but I recognize it back in me, but you're, you're going out the door with us, so.
I'm high five and you're all the way.
Are in front of us.
She's in front. Two-hundred-and-twenty-six and the rest of the day.
All right. We're gonna be in recess till ten.
And just realize you're gonna break the tie, David.
Judge. You know what? Let's go ahead and get started with the second session of the, uh, regular commissioners' court for Thursday, May nineteenth. And we're gonna start out with, well, we're gonna have a presentation with Kathy Collins, who is retiring after how many years? Seventeen years with the juvenile probation off, but she can't make it. So, we're gonna move into the next part, and that is a proclamation proclaiming May twenty-twenty-two as Community Action Month. And so I'm gonna read this. Whereas the Community Council South Central Texas, Inc., was established as a community action agency on May eleventh, nineteen sixty-five, and whereas the service area encompasses the South Central and Southwest Texas counties, Badgys, Els, Van Der B, Kamal, Dimon, Edwards, Rio, last week, Wailupi, Kearns, Kendall, Kenny, Kerr, the South, Lido, Maverick, McMonlon, Amadina, Real, Uvalde, Brown, Purdy, Wilson, and Tabala. That pretty much covers South Texas, doesn't it? Whereas community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties. And whereas community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas community action delivers innovative services and support that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas community action insists on community participation and involvement in ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard and last whereas. Whereas community action celebrates fifty-eight years of innovation and impact and providing proven results by American. Now therefore, we, the commissioners' court of Medina County, do hereby proclaim May twenty-second as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all community action agencies and trust money thereof. I hereunto set my hand and claws to effect a great seal on Medina County. So, Judge Klaus, who is here wearing his community council shirt, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, no, just thank the county for continuing support for the community action, uh, and the, uh, community council of South Central Texas. They're all at a, uh, conference today. I was on the board for eleven years. I live in the group swell by mine. And, uh, Ms. Cook, Teresa Cook, on three-sixty-three, took my place on the board that year. So, uh, I was the only one in the county with the shirt.
So, do we all get shirts? We can get shirts too?
This is twenty-seven, ninety-five, plus, uh-
Okay. Even for the XXL?
Is it, was it, no, first thing, one, get some of this film.
Okay. I need a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Judge. But hang around, we got another one that, that may involve you. This is, uh, discussed a cross black and our proclamation making May twenty-twenty-two to be Older Americans Month.
And me and Mr. Perkins are here.
And here. We're here alone, baby.
Three quarters of this.
I didn't put him up. I did not put him up. I did it on his own, all right?
Yeah, I know.
So, we're gonna do this, and it's a little bit shorter. Whereas Medina County includes a growing number of older adults who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. Did you hear that? Strength, wisdom, and experience. Whereas Medina County communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome, included, and supported. Whereas Medina County recognizes the need to create a community that provides services and supports older adults' need to thrive and live independently and, and age their way. And whereas Medina County can work to build an even better community for older adults by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in the place. Now therefore, Medina County's commissioners' court hereby proclaim May twenty-two, twenty-two and two to be Older Americans Month. Medina County Commissioners' Court urges every resident to recognize contributions of our older adults helped create an inclusive society in joint efforts to support older adults' choices about how they age in their communities. Do I have a motion for that? Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, did you want to add to that?
No.
You can't?
I just wanted to ask if I need to take a picture of them in the hall.
Of all of us? Well, if we want to, we'll have both proclamations, okay? Sure.
Sorry.
I'm making a motion, uh, to, to make May twenty-twenty-two to be Older Americans Month.
I don't know if I want to second it or not. You're being, you're being kind of wild here, okay?
That's a joke, Jerry. We already did it.
All right. So, you guys hold the proclamations up and, and, well, Judge Klaus, you're gonna have to-
I don't work with that.
So, you can, hey, you can make it. Judge Klaus qualifies for both proclamations, okay? Here, I guess we'll just sit. How about a whole? Come on up, come on up, everybody. Hold on.
There you go, Tina. Flat and long.
You want to hold it?
Sure, I'll hold it.
That's it.
I love you.
Can you read it?
I'm not missing.
No, I'm just for sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll see you on the way out.
Yes, sir.
All right.
You're going up, uh, there you go. Don't take it out, you know. Cause I don't take pictures of my feet.
I had to shine my shoes. Okay, next we have something much more exciting. We have a presentation by Patilla Brandon Hill on our fiscal audit, so. And what do you want to address?
So, this is Angela Verdusco. She's with PB and H, our independent auditors. Uh, she's gonna be presenting the draft version of our financial report for fiscal year ending in September thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
Welcome here, Angela.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for having me here.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You have one minute.
Oh, okay. Do my best.
Now she's dropping stuff, it's like, okay.
Let's see. I believe y'all have a draft, is that correct?
We do.
Okay.
We all have. This is a big man, a draft.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's the one, that's the one. Uh, again, my name is Angela Verdusco. I'm a supervisor with Patilla Brandon Hill. Uh, thank you for having me here. Uh, I'll be going over the draft. Um, at any point you found questions, feel free to stop me, and I'll answer as best. And I will also leave it open at the end for some questions and discussions. So, on page one, let's start there. Uh, page one is where the opinion letter will go. I did want to mention on page two, we do highlight that there was a new accounting standard that went into effect, eighty-four, uh, fiduciary activities. And I will go in detail where in the report that is. It is a significant change, so we do highlight it there. Um, and I'll go in detail where that's in the report, but I did want to mention that. Uh, page four. I'm sorry, page three is the management and discussion analysis. That's just a high overview of the activity for the county, so if you just wanted to brief, you could read those couple of pages and it-
In a short nutshell, are we okay?
Yes, you are. There, there's nothing, you know, problems or issues.
Without reading all seventy pages, right?
No, no, not at all. I'll, I'll-
Every gets geeked, is it?
Yes, yes. He's doing, he's doing an excellent job. He's doing an excellent job.
All right, so make sure, is the other side fund balance another word for reserves?
Uh, I will show, yes, yes, we'll kind of go over that as well. Um, page nine, let's go to the financials. All right, so those first two schedules are a full accrual, where we include the capital assets and debt, kind of similar to a business type. Um, our ending acquisition for the year is fifty-two million. Uh, again, I'm just using rounded numbers, so that was an increase-
Fine.
Seven-two from the prior year. If we go to page five, that is mainly an increase from property taxes, sales taxes during the year, miscellaneous revenue from the year. Um, we can go to page fifteen. We can start looking at the fund balance. Or, I'm sorry, this is on page thirteen. On page thirteen, we've got the general fund. We have an ending fund balance of fifteen-point-six million. That was an increase of four-point-three for the year. And then on page fourteen, we see the overall ending fund balance for all of the funds at twenty-four-point-one million, okay? That was a decrease of thirteen-point-five, but that's mainly coming from the change in the certificates of obligation, two thousand one. The expenditures for the capital outlay, uh, expenses related to the annex, the jail. But overall, in sum, your general fund went up four-point-three, um, uh, and I'll highlight some of the other funds as well. Any questions over that?
You're doing good.
All right, let's go to page twenty-one. Twenty-one, so start of the notes. Uh, if you want any more additional detail for the capital assets, debt, this is the place where we can take a look at that. I did want to highlight, uh, the page twenty-seven. Uh, we had a few funds with a deficit fund balance. Um, we had the health unit, thirty-six thousand, the juvenile probation department, forty-eight thousand, and the grants, forty-six thousand.
That's because of time you don't pay.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, the grants, you spend it, and very few grants, they, they give you the money ahead of time. You have to spend it and then request it, yeah. Let's take a look at the page twenty. I just wanted to highlight, because y'all did have a lot of activity in there for the year. We have a lot of additions in the CIP, again, related to the annex, because we're looking at fiscal year in E twenty-one, and then the jail. We do see a lot of activity for the year on that. Let's go to page thirty-eight.
Moving along.
Y'all tell me, y'all want more? I'll give you more.
No.
Okay, okay.
No, we're good.
Okay, okay.
I, I like to read this to the donuts and, and, uh-
I like to be, you know, the right amount, you know, give you some information, but let's not be here for two hours.
That's correct.
Uh, so page thirty-eight is giving the overview comparing the general fund to the original and final budget. I did want to highlight the revenue on page thirty-nine.
Well, it looks like on page thirty-eight, the, uh, county's been drinking more alcohol, because we picked up, we were nine-thousand dollars over budget on beer and wine permits. So, COVID. What else do I have to do?
So, this year, um, if we look at that on page thirty-nine, the variance compared, um, the actual amounts of twenty-three million and budgeted was twenty million. So, two-point-nine over what y'all anticipated receiving for that. So, if we take a look at the expenditures, we can take a look at page forty-four. So, overall budgeted expenditures, we had nineteen-point-one million, and, I'm sorry, that's the actual amount. Budgeted, we had twenty-point-four. So, we were actually under one-point-two million for the expenditures.
It's a little less than we thought.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, all good news there. And let's take a look at page sixty. On page sixty, we've got the income statement for the road and bridge funds. Um, all, all departments, they had an increase in fund outs for the year. So, it's there.
So Danny, he hasn't spent it all yet, but give him a few months, all right? You too, T.
Oh, one thing I did miss, failed to mention. On page forty-seven. I heard y'all might want to hear on the contributions. So, uh, TCRS comes as a schedule of the activity, and it highlights the employer contributions and the member contributions. So, we've got nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, five-hundred for employer, and member contribution, six-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-three. So, this schedule shows it as a twelve-thirty-one. Let's see. Okay, let's go to page seventy-one. So, seventy-one through page seventy-four are the new schedules that are a bit different than prior years. Now, GASB eighty-four is a new accounting standard that affected all governmental entities, so it's not just y'all that are incurring this. It's going across all governmental entities. So, in the past, on page seventy-one, we typically had the cash and then just the offset, it, due to others, individuals, governments. Now, this year, we're also having to show the inflows and outflows. They're, they're calling it additions and deductions on that, okay? So, you can see that on page seventy-three. Page seventy-three and seventy-four are completely new schedules for this year. It's a new standard, and going forward, this is how it will be presented. In addition to, it, it, their prior report used to say agency funds. The terminology changes a bit. It's now referred to as a custodial fund. And these schedules here are strictly reporting, um, funds held on behalf of others, individual organizations. This is excluding any of the county's activity, okay? So, page seventy-three and seventy-four are, are huge undertaking for this past year, so this is for some of the changes that were going on for this past year.
So, help me out here. Let's just take the sheriff protest, the biggest number on page seventy-four. Eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars additions comes from where?
Um, it's broken down contributions from judgments. So, if you hold seventy-three and seventy-four,
Uh.
Um, some of that is the taxes and fees collected.
Taxes and fees, okay.
Yes.
We all, we were always bringing those monies in. We just have to account for them separately now, in a different way?
Yes, um, this is new schedule, additions and deduction.
All right.
Yeah. Let's go to page seventy-nine. Kind of the last big piece that I wanted to go over. So, the county spent seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal expenditures. That's the threshold, and so they require to have a single audit. Um, and for the year, we tested the WIC program, and that's noted on page eighty-one. Seventy-nine just highlights, you know, which grants and how much expenditure for any of those.
Okay.
And kind of the last piece I just wanted to mention is, you know, I wanted to thank Eduardo and the rest of his team for helping us. Uh, this year, like I said, eighty-four was a huge undertaking, especially as for counties as well. Uh, this year, we had also the software conversion, which when they sell that software, they say, "It's gonna be easy." It's, and, you know, the day-to-day, it, it's a little bit more complicated than that, so.
We're getting there.
So, uh, we've been working through that. Um, you know, that first year is probably the hardest, and after that, you know, it definitely gets easier. Um, I've been doing this twelve, fourteen years now, and there's never been a smooth, completely software conversion. It, it takes some keys to kind of work through, but, um, for the delay as far as it being a draft, there's no major issues, concerns that I have. It's just that we're, we are working, we're working through some of those conversions.
So, when is the final audit gonna be presented? I mean, you don't have to present it, and you're just gonna send it to us, right?
Uh, whichever we prefer. We can-
We, we can do it. Or it does have to be finalized by June, June.
By June thirtieth.
And we're, we're gonna do that.
I'm sorry?
We'll make that, David.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we'll make that, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Nope, she started the game. We're doing good, so. As long as, you'll tell us if we're going back.
Okay, yes.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I'd let you know.
All right, thank you, Angela.
All right, thank you.
I do want to thank Angela and the rest of the PBNH. I do want to thank Angela and the rest of the PD and A team, they worked pretty hard with the conversion. It was, it has been difficult, but they don't dislike it, they like the conversion, they like the new, new.
Absolutely.
Financial software.
Absolutely.
And that GASB eighty-four, I did ask for touch up on that, because it has been, that's probably been the toughest part of this, of this audit, but so thank you, Angela and the rest of the PD and A team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Eduardo and your staff, you've done a great job.
Absolutely, yes, and thank my staff, they're the ones who brought in most of the work and all the details for this audit.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to have to discuss a possible action on a resolution, improvement authorized publication of notice of public hearing regarding the possible creation of a heavy forms public improvement district, establishing the date of the public hearing, resolving other matters of connection therewith, Mr. Benford.
Clay Benford.
You're here in a while.
I haven't been here in a while, great to see you again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Clay Benford, representing the county, this is a continuation of a project that we've been here before, it's Trey Marsh's Haiti Ranch Development. We actually have had a petition filed, and we've had a notice of public hearing, we actually held a public hearing. Over the course of time, as we've negotiated the development agreement, we had some corrections, they had the property resurveyed, the acreage was slightly off in the petition, it's less than one acre, but they also had some, some changes in the scope of the project from a potential amount of cost, just the cost has risen over time, so we said, "Let's just go ahead and republish, we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll approve all the documents at the same time." So this just, is a continuation, but really formalizes the minor changes that we've had, just so that everything is completely consistent for will.
I'll make that move. I'll take it. Motion is second, any other discussion? All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? If you have something to be decided, since it's just one document, right?
We also need the clerk, they're over here with.
Oh, never mind.
We're good.
All right, thanks. Motion passes. Next, we have to discuss a possible action on final approval of brush line subdivision precinct one. You're on.
Yes, so we are just hoping for final approval on the brush line subdivision, it's three acres, one acre lots, three one acre lots in North Altivines, off a county road. They have already provided a letter from the water company that's providing the water, that there is sufficient water, that they can have the meters. The owner has not gotten the meters yet put in, but they are in the process of doing so.
Yeah, this is the one that's actually going to be David's agenda.
Right.
But he's.
Right now.
So it's yours right now?
It's mine.
And you're good?
David's good, as well as I am, so I'll make the motion to be approved finally.
Second. Motion is second, any other discussion? All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you have any more up here?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the next survey, okay? Thank you. Next, we have discussed a possible action preliminary final approval of Mesquite Creek subdivision located in precinct one.
Mr. Howard.
Morning. Yes, sir, we're asking for preliminary final for Mesquite Creek, the nine-lot subdivision on Highway ninety and County Road forty-five thirteen. We have an agreement letter with TexDOT for the driveways, with Yancy Water for the water meters, and Medina Electric for providing electric service.
I've been contacting TexDOT, they, they already come to approve it.
So how many driveways are going to come off Highway ninety?
Six.
Six? And they're okay with that?
Being residential, yes.
I didn't know. Okay, good. All right.
The motion to be approved, preliminary and final.
Thank you.
I don't know, should we make Mr. Lawrence come up and address this, or something like that, you know?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. David. Next, we have discussed a possible action on preliminary approval of Megan's Landing subdivision, unit one, located in precinct two.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Andrew Ortega with NTR and Ears, also have Samuel Garcia with me. We're here today seeking approval of the, an amendment for the Megan's Landing MDP. The purpose of the amendment is to include a recently acquired property to the west. It's thirty-four acres, it has access to Petranco Road, we're going to go ahead and incorporate that piece of property, those thirty-four acres, into the project and develop as a single-family residential. It's going to add another eighty-one lots to the project, and some of them are going to be the seventy-foot wide lot.
These are the garden home sections.
The garden home sections, which will have, I guess, the front yards maintained by the HOA, which I think was a requirement from Commissioner Sitter. So we worked that out with the developer, all the parties involved, so.
So you've been involved?
I've been involved in it, and I did talk with Commissioner Sitter yesterday, and he is hundred percent on board with it, so what that means is that I will make the motion to approve this preliminary.
I've got a question. One of the concerns during the last big fire was ingress and egress, that some of these subdivisions only had one.
Yes.
One point of entry, one point of exit. Is this that more than one?
That's correct, yes, this amendment will also create a secondary access to Petranco Road, which will only be used for emergency exit.
Exactly.
Is that right next to your fire station?
Is that what you're going to be direct responder, you're going to be fed by Microsoft?
Yeah, it's by the Microsoft.
Oh, it's by Microsoft?
It's correct.
It's by Microsoft, so it's going to go in next to Microsoft?
Correct, yes, sir.
Gotcha. Okay, I have a motion, did you second it?
Yes, sir.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discussed a possible action on Hunter's Ranch Base Three, County Road three eighty-one extension.
I think there may have been an item, yeah, before that.
Did I ask you something?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, discussing, what did we just do, the master development plan?
Correct, yeah.
Now we're getting preliminary approval of Megan's Landing subdivision, sorry.
No, we're seeking, yeah, preliminary plat approval for unit one.
Yeah.
It's sixty-one lots, this will be the, like, kind of the backbone of the subdivision, we're going to build the large collector that goes all the way down, we're going to do a water line extension from the east to the development, and plat the area for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And they want to start construction in about a month.
And well, Commissioner Sitter is on board with this one as well, so I'll make the motion to be approved.
Thank you.
Motion is second, any other discussion? So I have one question, I, the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have everything set up for that, moving forward with it?
So, not us personally.
I know y'all are, but.
The utility provider, they're working with TCQ to work on discharge permits and such.
So they have the reasonings set up and everything?
They do, that is correct. As far as land ownership goes, they do have that set up.
Moving toward discharge, is that wrong?
Yes, that is correct.
The vast conversation we have, they're going to try to push off the receding water and water over three states.
Yeah. That's correct.
Perfect. All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now you still have one more.
I think we're going to need to table this next item.
Table the Hunter's Ranch, the County Road three eighty-one?
We're not finished with construction all the way, so.
All right.
We'll come back, I think, next, next week.
Jennifer?
Okay.
Next time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, we have discussed a possible action approval of commercial contract for the purchase of Community National Bank and Hondo National Bank, and authorized Judge Stewart to execute the contract. So, I think this was on the last agenda, y'all want to table it till I'm here, was there any questions specific, or?
Well, we came up with the, the option.
Oh, okay, now, now we got them to go. So this is, oh, you know, we run an executive session, and we're going to purchase both bank buildings for two-point-one million, the only change I have on the whole contract, Mr. Roddy's changed, and on the back page, they had us at two million, four million liability, and Debbie gave me our liability, it's one million for our current, so Mr. Roddy sort of changed that. Other than that, the contract's pretty much the same. Mr. Benford is, actually has the chairman of the board of the Texan Bank.
I'm chairman.
You're the, oh, Judge Barton, so, so I, and I, I know that it seems like there probably should be a conflict, but I do not believe there is, since they're acting in their positions as chairman, and since it is a, what we would call a, it's a deal that is a good deal for us, and it's a good deal for them, and I think there's nothing underhanded about it, so.
And I provided illegal advice to the county or the bank on the honor.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you're a little bit hard on the county, okay? I just want to say, the price could have been better, okay? Just telling you, all right?
I understand.
But, in the long term, it will be a good, those buildings will be great assets for the county to have, so.
I'll make the motion to be approved, the commercial contract for purchase of Community National Bank and Hondo National Bank, and I'll drive Judge Barton to execute the contract.
I'll save it. Two seconds. Any other comments? Can you put that slow second? Okay.
Well, you're the best one of my concerns.
Yeah, and I think that was, I've heard that, so I just want to make sure that we all know that, that it is a straight-up deal, so there's nothing underhanded about it, so we're good to go.
Well, not that far.
Which part? Oh.
Place of honor.
Oh, yeah. So, all those prepared, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll give you so. Aye. Don't count that, okay? There was nothing controversial about this, so we're good. Okay, on to the next, we discussed a possible action acceptance of Texas. Thank you, Mr. Benford.
Thank you.
Texas Indigent Defense Commission, fiscal year twenty-two. Aaron, is that what you were here for, to make sure we block your vote?
I was in support of Mr. Lutz, but I was also abstaining.
Okay.
I'm not Mr. Lutz, I was Lawrence Keith Lawrence.
Oh, you were supporting him?
I was supporting him.
Not because we're buying your bank building?
Hey, you know what, that's good, too.
The Texas Indigent, this is the grant that we have every year, and it's just, the state figures out, and they give every county some amount of money, and this is ours, forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Is that more than last year?
It's a little bit less, last year we got a little more, forty-three.
Okay. So we need to prove it to get the money.
I made the motion to be accepted, did you correct?
Thank you.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All those prepared, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discussion, take possible action on resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year twenty-three TIDC multi-year improvement grant, resolution for the Indigent Defense Coordinator. So basically, this resolution says we want their money, that Beverly Ham is going to be designated as the authorized agent to accept it, and that Darcy is going to be designated as a financial officer for this thing, so.
This is the fourth year, so it'll be eighty percent county expenses, and then twenty percent charity.
Okay.
I only imagine that's next year it'll be.
Zero. Next year, it's all the county, and in society, you will hopefully still have a job, okay? I mean, we're only paying twenty percent, I mean, eighty percent now, so I think, well.
She saves well.
You talked to that guy right over there, okay? It's going to be Keith's problem, okay? So. Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that resolution, the Indigent Defense Improvement Grant.
Motion is second. You want Darcy to be on your case, or something?
Yeah.
I got my bullseye on the hole, whatever.
All those prepared, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have discussed a possible action on approval of a quote from Titan Technologies for the setup and configuration of transitioning to full brazos for the sheriff's office, that is for the.
We're going to table that one.
We're tabling that?
Yes.
Well, that's good. All right, next, we have discussed a possible action on authorization to send a thirty-day notice. Do we really need to send this, well, how are you, determined precinct road materials contractor Jay Mummy standing gravel?
So that, that's kind of the, I'm curious, so, the issue is that we, on the bid, we have a three-eighths paving rock that we purchased specifically from Mr. Mummy, and we do purchase another three-eighths paving rock from other vendors, but what they sell is crushed, not the pea gravel that we purchased specifically from Mr. Mummy. Now, Clay has found another vendor that's not part of our bidted-out vendors that we can purchase from, but we would have to cancel this, this agreement first.
Because Mr. Mummy does not.
He's correct.
He knows this, and he, he told me, in our phone conversation I had, and Edward heard the phone conversation, little speaker, and he says, "If I'm not, we should have to go somewhere else, we should have to go somewhere else," but I think we probably owe him something either in writing to say that he's okay with that action. We talked about this, and as far as this contract is concerned.
He's no longer producing it, is that correct, right now?
Well, we don't really know, and even if he produces, in a sense, in a small capacity, Tim and I have discussed this, that it doesn't sustain us at all. It used to sustain us as total paving rock, and then it got to where it's a better version operation, and now it doesn't sustain that, and that's one of the three reasons, Larry, because of the use. And this is with some Jerry's room this morning, there's, "Hey, if you don't need again," and we have, but we're carrying it by now, that is typically an opposite.
So we need to cancel Mr. Mummy, so that we can go out for bids?
I don't think we have to go out for bids.
Well, that's the next action.
Yeah, that one, I don't think we have to do, that other vendor, if we purchase from them after thirty days, after talking to Tim and Clay, we're not going to reach fifty-thousand dollars for that specific material. And the only other concern was that the vendor could shift around their pricing at their discretion.
I guess what you're saying is, we have to cancel Jimmy to get to the other vendor?
After thirty days, correct.
Okay.
Now, that's something that, I mean, separate discussion. That account needs to be established, you know, they work the place, but nothing's been done yet, so obviously we're waiting on that.
What do y'all do now with the rock?
We, we, we speak up there, you know, basically, half a building, before ten or twenty days, and it's not sufficient. And the reason behind this is the difference between, it probably just a worry issue, you put all your, you're limiting all this, it's pea gravel, it's ground, it's not crushed. I've been on this particular piece of equipment for a few years, and it is crushed, obviously with sharp edges, and this stuff is very, unfortunately moved, it's moved over the jury. But why not that the jury can mount their ears, which is several thousands of ways? We already looked through, I guess you could call it consumables, because we replace them a lot, our hoses, they're quite about six hundred a set, and this crushed gravel will absolutely chew open pieces.
What's under the chairs?
That's what we're going to have, goes from the back of the plant.
Okay.
A jury, if there's something, if they scare it a little bit, it backfires it out, pulls it out of hawthorn.
Out of our paving machine?
Correct.
So Jimmy cannot supply enough to keep up with what we have.
That's a hot line.
And he's the only one that has pea gravel.
And we're not, I'm just trying, and he's not going to try anymore, and we might do that, I don't know.
Well, what we can do is, is we can cancel this, go out for bids, which is the next item, he wants to bid again? Jimmy?
No, he hasn't said about bidding again, we just want to go out and be able to purchase the gravel until it comes time for a letting again, for.
Well, we could also purchase from him, too, then.
Exactly, we can, at whatever rate you. Well, it's not necessarily sole source because of what it's written, but it's a sole source because of the quality of the type of gravel, so I don't know why you'd do it on him, or if you could.
All right, but he understands forgiveness.
Jimmy, he does, but again, that's for me and him, and I think. Most of him and him. A gentleman at this conversation.
All right, correct. So I need a motion.
I'll make a thirty-day notice. Does it terminate, is it approved, do you understand, Brett?
Motion is second, any other discussion? All those prepared, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? You really have to be aware of this because there's, there's only two of them. Motion passes, so we're going to skip number thirty. We do not need thirty because we're not going to go fifty thousand.
Yeah, if, if we go out for bids again, by the time the thirty.
I'm not handing you the chair, basically.
All right.
And yes, we're going to be preparing, but we're not, yeah.
All right, then we're just table thirty. Thank you very much for your, uh, participation. Hey, you know, you may want to hang around because we may take action on precinct three here if you're not here.
I don't want to do that. I, I can go since September. And I won't be terminated before then. So.
All right.
I mean, do you need?
No.
Uh, you're good, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion of business that they discussed and take possible action on approval of Shinner plus maintenance service agreement for the casual annex elevator. That is just our annual.
Maintenance contract?
Maintenance contract on the casual elevator that we just put in.
Will be taken for the fourth.
Second. Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those clerks say aye.
Aye.
Does Turner do the rest of our stuff?
They do the old jam.
They do the old jam? All right. Motion passes. Next, we have discussed, we're tabling the next one, thirty-two, thirty-three, discuss the possible action on approval of twenty-twenty-two service agreement with the Hennessy Fire Department. This is an annual deal that we pay them five thousand dollars for firefighting and fire protective services since they do not have an ESD.
Is anybody here from Hennessy?
No, but we have Devine in Casco here.
I don't know how they get five thousand dollars to buy a set of tires.
They, they currently operate off a hundred percent go-ahead.
Yep.
Other than this, this amount, they operate off of go-ahead.
Is there a reason why they never have, want to do the, join the ESD or, do y'all know?
That's why I asked if there was anybody in the Hennessy.
Judge, there, there is a, I mean, back to the history of it, they missed the, they missed opportunity. There's some conflicting things of what happened, but bottom line is when all the other ESDs were created, it didn't happen with the Hennessy. They may have some interest in the future, but they're not sure of that, so.
I mean, can you amend, say, the Hondo ESD and join them with it or if they ever want to do?
We should go back off into the election.
Sure.
They'll do, uh, on it, but it could be, uh, if the ESD wants to be a part of that, that's, that's a whole other question also.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, we approve it.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those clerks say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a discussion of possible action of authorization to advertise the public hearing placed for the stop signs, intersections, County Roads seventy-four twenty-one and County Road seven thirty-two. This is just the advertisement for public hearings.
I'll move the, uh, authorize, prioritize.
I'll take it.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those clerks say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're not going to need a, uh, executive session, so we'll go on to court member announcements.
Yeah, we, uh, the last three weeks, we probably tore up eight miles of road with our engine. There were four miles of charity precinct four.